Want to read the suit of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. I will call the meeting to order. We have a forum. I will take a most of the agenda in a minute. Second, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Rich?
Uh, good morning.
Morning.
We still continue to interview and then we've got one offer out to be our last hire if we can get them. We're still doing our routine maintenance. Sounds like this week's good work. Good weekend. Continue to blade and we'll get them straight now. Cold and I are diligently working on closing out our federal age CHBP project, the Witherwood project, and the one that was with Mitchell County. Plus of several other projects that we had laying out there. So we're busy up there with paperwork and documents for materials. Um, next week I'll put on the agenda, the final pay for the farm market project in Witherwood, which I've never understood. The DOT allows me to sign for the board, but yet they want the board to sign. I don't understand their whole process, but whatever. It's the final pay. We put that in agenda for next week, next week. So.
Yeah, because we've given you the approval.
You do that and then they, I don't understand why they say you can sign for it and then in the end they still want you to sign. So whatever, that's what we'll do. So we're working on closing out a lot of projects that are just kind of hanging out that we need to get done. So. That's all I've got for maintenance. We continue to look for uh equipment now and then. I think we're going to sit down here this winter and and look at trying to bid some more bigger pieces of equipment that we need to get in rotation. Trucks are over a year out, so we need to start looking if we want to get something, we gotta start ordering it now. Problem with ordering equipment now, no matter whether it's a truck or a motor grader, the the word on the street is you can order it now and then in a year they'll still jack up uh price on a price even though they have quoted you one. So because of materials and whatever you add and then they could name their price because if you don't want it, somebody else will buy it. So anyway, that's kind of where we're headed right now. I'll be working on budgets in due.
Yeah. Any questions for Rich? Thank you, Rich. Um drainage. We've got some claims. Motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Um, accept DD two completion report.
Yeah, so I've got the two reports here. They're in triplicate. Just see if I can send those. I put a little tab next to each one. And then we need to set the confirmation hearing date. If you're okay, December eighteenth at nine thirty. That date's all right with Jacob to come to you. So.
Yep. So I need a motion to accept the DD two completion report and also a motion to set the date December eighteenth and on thirty. A motion to approve the completion report and set the public hearing date. I have a motion in a second. All those say, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And then I have a beaver trapping form. Doug Arneson had Rich Hunsie. Crap some beavers for him.
Uh-huh.
DD seven.
You need to approve, but no, paying the second or the third payment on.
Yeah.
First. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have that there?
Your assignment.
Oh.
That's right.
I need a motion to approve the third payment. So on DD two pay request.
I'll say it.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I thought it was all wrapped in one. So.
Okay, now we've got a discussion and possible action on.
No, that's.
Oh.
That they've already been trapped.
Oh.
I just need to pay that one.
We just need to pay this one. Need a motion to pay uh.
Well, you bet you paid him with the drainage claim, right?
I haven't paid yet.
Oh, okay.
This is Rich Hunsie?
Yep.
Okay. Trapped uh five beavers. At uh two hundred and fifty dollars. I need a motion to approve this payment.
I'll offer that.
As a second, I have a motion in a second. All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Maybe we'll.
You got any more stuff?
It's supposed for you to sign in a minute from last round. Or about. Your minimum news we got on last Monday.
Now we've got the resolution. You got that?
Yeah, right. Did you Jeff called me on Friday and said that he was okay with it? Are you guys okay with it?
I read it through and I'm fine with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
It's going up the other butt. Are we gonna, are, are we gonna end up with people finding beaver tail somewhere else or?
So again, I, I guess maybe I didn't know if I read it a great note. Number one, I used to have a request from a land owner before anything is paid.
It's just quite a jump.
I know it is, but and I'm, I, and I'm not a trap.
And then after.
I understand it's pretty, not really very good for these guys to do it. So and beavers are getting to be the number one problem in some of these ditches again for some reason. I don't know if it comes from the dry, they're looking at the water or whatever.
And then I read in there that they almost got to have a second signature after they catch the beaver. As to where the section that it came out of and the drainage district that it came out of.
And as long as they have handlers signing off on them, better know they come out of what dish they come out of.
Yeah, or can I say something else? So when the coyote bounty was, is still going on, that was a landowner signature required too. And what ended the coyote bounty was there was a pretty big group of people on from Winnebago County that were killing coyotes there, bringing, bringing them here. They were going out to South Dakota, killing them and bringing them back here. Cause all, all the way they do for certification is just that body part, right? So with tails, it can be the same way. It, it, cause everybody's got a friend who's willing to sign a piece of paper that says, but I don't, I don't care one way or the other. I, I just think when you move it up fifty dollars higher than neighboring county, we're going to see, we're going to be paying for Winnebago beavers. But. Uh, but.
In trapping, one of the things like with Otter right now, they have to leave them in the trap and they have to be verified that they come out of that area by the DNR agent. Maybe that's something you can look at that.
And that's mine. And somebody's got to do it.
I mean.
Kind of like zoning.
Yeah, I guess I don't really have a problem with it. But my, my thing is, is if I, I'd say if we feel like that might be being abused if all of a sudden, because I think just, I think just going countywide with it, you're going to see an increase no matter what. I mean, I, and I, I think it's going to be, I think the countywide thing's a good thing if the.
We're not going countywide.
But it's still gotta be drainage. Drainage districts. I mean.
We did talk about outside the drainage district last week.
Okay, so if you're.
If you're staying within the drainage district.
It has to be affecting a drainage district. I mean, you know, like a good example, even though I'm private, because like a lot of water draining north of the Alprick Mark. And we spent half summer chasing them out. We finally got them out of there. But you know, if that was a drainage district, I could have.
Right.
I could, or I mean, I could have hired somebody privately. It wouldn't make no difference. But drainage district, I could have and I've got a couple landowners. And we could went after and pressed.
Okay, I, I was, I didn't look at.
Yeah. No, it's not free for all. You can't. I mean, if it's still going to be drainage district, then it's. I'm not, it has to affect a drainage district before it's going to fall. But yeah.
Did it say that exactly? See, I didn't read it that way. We talked about it last week.
Drainage district.
What's that?
Drainage dis- ditch of a drainage district in Worth County.
That means it's got to be in the drainage district in that ditch. That's the way I read it.
Let's see.
That's number one.
See, that's sometimes it affects that, it affects that drainage district, but it's outside of that.
Right.
And that's what you were talking about last week. Did you want that in there?
I think it is. I think it should be as long as, like you say, they have to get. It needs to be the landlord in that district. I understand the front thing, but.
You still got to get the permission.
Right.
And everything, but it means if you catch one outside the district, that's affecting that district.
I don't have idols. I don't, I think increasing a good thing. If it's going to be anywhere in the county, you know, outside of district boundaries, then that's where I get nervous because you know, like all El Creek. Right. I mean, that's, that's a free for all. And in the, the signature thing kind of goes out the door because when they go to the DNR, it's just they're taking with their word that that's where they got them. Yeah. You know, there's no permission needed. There's public access. They go in, trap, whatever, but there's not necessarily saying that it's, that's what's coming. No, yeah, they're going to have to be able to at least get somebody to, I guess, let's say live on if you want to.
Right.
And they're going to, you know, to get that beaver. So.
Is there a specific distance out of the drainage district? Say the drainage district ends here in the natural creek, but it's like quarter mile down. They've got a dam. Well.
Yep.
That dam may not really be affecting that elevation based on how much that water flow and that might.
Yeah, who determines?
Who determines whether or not that's a need or not?
And that's.
That's a good landowner.
And he's also in the drainage district, so it doesn't get covered. Still.
I, I want to make sure that people, because we'll get those calls too about the W that it's in a natural stream, but the drainage district dumps into that. Well, how far downstream does it really affect it? Where you really need to do anything about it?
It has to be drainage ditch of a drainage district.
Yeah, right now, that's where it's the way it was in the past. With a. Unless you want to change it and then you might run into this situation all far away. And like Jim is saying, when you do the whole county that way with, you can be close to it. We might run into problems. But we will.
Mm-hmm.
We go countywide.
Or you might go on Johnny one.
No, it's. And then that's. Got to stay in the, take that off the table then.
Cause we've got it in the drainage district and if not anyone has a problem with one just rouse as a district, could they come?
It could certainly could come and we could. Could you, could you have? If you have a creek that feeds a drainage district and you have a problem, you come and request, so you don't say, I'm going to have. I would think we could make.
We could do that, I would think.
It wouldn't affect the ordinance or the.
So now the question is, do you want to go to a hundred? Or do you want to go seventy-five or?
I just know it was suggested by landowner from the trap.
Well, I had it suggested to me too.
Yeah, because they're really, you know, time and effort and fuel and it doesn't, it's you know, it takes about, it takes about a hundred bucks. You know, you only get one beaver and you spend a week trying to get it, you know, checking traps and driving down and. I know our list of people when someone called our office and asked who trapped, we have three or four people that we didn't tell them. And that's, he doesn't know, and that's it. And we're, we're going after people who brought us tails. You know, the, the, you know, those are the ones who understand and they're trapping. I'd prefer to take it to a hundred and, you know, and I'm setting there we are being.
It's fine with me. We can always change it. So. We make it. Make that a motion to approve uh resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty as it's now written.
So. Votes having a.
I have a motion in a second. We'll call votes maybe.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Lowered. Aye. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty is duly adopted. Get some claims.
I mean, with uh with the forms that are, you know, the form doesn't change. But is there a way that they're supposed to certify? I know they date the forms when they caught the beaver. But then I, I guess it doesn't really matter. It's all going back in the assessment.
I'll have them being the forms, the forms as it is.
But you know what I mean? I'm, I'm just saying like someone who caught a beaver this weekend was, I don't care. It comes out of just the assessments back to the district. Right. But. They are paying, they affect it.
Right.
New panel will be affected by some of the drainage.
Well, and one guy just did the work. He's only getting big.
Yeah. And that's where the suggestion came from actually was from Doug. But uh, because I mean, he got him to do it and I think Doug actually subsidized that a little bit.
I'll take a motion to approve the claims.
Or move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Will improve payroll claim.
We have a motion in a second to approve the payroll claims. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, anything else you got? I didn't see any liquor or nothing else. What else?
We got a report.
Oh. This is yours?
Yeah.
I'll take a motion to approve the auditor's payroll or the auditor's quarterly report. My motion to approve report.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
The payroll.
When I have a payroll eligibility for Adam Martin or you secondary roles, is there a motion to approve this?
So.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Got everything you've got?
Yes. I don't have any more paper.
Uh, now we have a budget request from the Worth County Historical Society. Are they here?
Yep.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
So in years past, we have gotten about thirty-five hundred dollars from the supervisors to spread throughout all of our buildings in Worth County um to help pay with, you know, heating and air. Um, and we do get hotel motel packs too, which she decided then was enough and took away the thirty-five hundred. So I, I sent you a letter back in October, never got a response. But um, so this is a request to get that thirty-five hundred back to help all of the buildings of Worth County. Cause the hotel motel tax does um kind of pays my salary. Um, and honestly, I'm not bragging, but without me, they'd be falling behind even more. And our buildings are falling behind. You know, I'm, I'm grant writing as much as possible, but any help that you can give us would be appreciated.
We will take it into consideration and uh make a call on it during budget time. And uh, one thing I want to bring to your attention is the governor cracked down on us pretty hard with HF seven eighteen eleven. So we're going to, we really got to get tight with the budget this year. So, but that doesn't mean that we won't take a look at that and keep that in mind. Okay?
Budgets are hard everywhere and prices are going up. So understandably.
Yeah. See, the deal with this is we got four years, in four years, we got to be there. And every year that we don't get there, we're going to get penalized. So there's a.
And there's only so much that we can levy.
Right.
Yeah, I just needed to.
And that's what it developed is. So, but yeah, that's right. I just want to bring it to your attention.
Right.
Yeah. So, but thank you for coming in.
Thank you for listening.
We'll discuss it during budget. Um, next. Jason Petersburg with the Water System and Food Project plus a discussion on water and sewer roads.
Yes, sir. Thank.
We'll do them both together once.
Before I dive into rates, last meeting I was here, Jackie asked about that smaller water tower.
Security?
Anything on there for these people in the climate? And there it's not. We want to look at getting something out of that.
Absolutely.
I see it. Okay.
But I can't believe this. I can't believe we're done in the climate. Or I've seen all this guy like twelve thousand cameras. I mean, yeah.
Well. Yeah, let's go home.
We did pull on the others. So we.
Yep. So are we going to put that together with the item?
No, I will put that with the guys that did the tower work. They have to come back to this. In fact, that big tower is probably, they will just have them get one order. Make a part of that. They will just make a part of that because that's what they do with all the work. Yeah.
So we'll go ahead and add that. Um. Did you catch that?
Hmm.
There is no security on the small water tower, so we are going to have him have that and do that.
I checked it out for you.
Um. As far as the DNR is concerned, I believe I got most of the rest of the information last week. We got some on going today and then we'll have everything in their hands for a water supply construction permit. Um, the reason we've been getting some email from them, you probably said if they had issues on there, I looked at their computers for their concern first one being off. That's what I think. But it, it was, it, it died on my desk for a short time. Now, I want to talk a little bit about rates. I handed out um some information, some of it you've seen, some of you haven't really before I meet with the property owners out there. I guess I want to get your uh your opinion. So page one, table one is just their profit loss. We've talked about this before. Waste water is losing four percent and twenty-one, twenty-two and nineteen percent point three one. So bottom of page one, there's table two. We're looking at what is it going to cost to operate these victims next year? I mean, it's all these businesses are paying a hundred percent of the cost for the water and wastewater that they um services that they get out there. So we were looking at projected future year costs of a hundred and three thousand on the water, which is consistent with last year on the water. And a hundred and eighty-five thousand is actually less than last year on the wastewater. Um, but looking at what you've spent so far, um as far as operational, that's where we see that. However, the right column there, we do have some anticipated annual capital expenditure for the water. We added fifty thousand here. Do that for years. We're coding of that small water tower. For the wastewater, I know you're getting some work done now and there's anticipated to be some more, I understand. So we added forty thousand dollars there. At least for this first year, for some of that repair work that needs to be done, this this uh facility isn't new anymore. You know, they're, they're taking some uh the replacements, some pumps, some motors bearings, et cetera. So so there's going to be some more work that's going to need to be done out there.
You already got half of that, more than half of that spoken for, don't you? Already?
Or is. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
As far as the forty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, if you go to the bottom there, it says, um, I did add ten percent to each water and wastewater in the end. So I added another fifteen thousand for coverage basically for the unknowns for the water, twenty-two thousand for the wastewater. So really we're at sixty-five thousand increase on the water end um for the uh estimated capital expenditures and then there'd be a sixty, we thought sixty-three thousand on the way. So I needed to get to those bottom two numbers. The recommended reimbursement, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand water, two hundred and forty-seven thousand wastewater. That's what we need to invoice for the next year. If everybody's in agreement there, we'll keep going with the, the part that I guess I feel we need to discuss before we meet with the property owner. Page two. So the water system is pretty straightforward. Um. There's four users. Wastewater is my concern. Um, your ordinance is set up. It's based on a three-year rolling average of water consumption as far as each page one percent. So the top water three year, you'll see that we have Diamond Hill at sixty-four percent, Country Inn twenty percent, Holiday Inn Express seven point eight percent, and then Come and Go at eight point two percent. Then we get into wastewater and I have two options there because of the Holiday Inn Express. And I guess that, that's my question. Do we want to include Holiday Inn Express when we present this to them? Do we want to go talk to Holiday Inn Express first? Cause if you go to the last page, um, the bottom two tables, top one, off the two in the green. If we include Holiday Inn Express, their new rate will be about nineteen thousand dollars a year. Their nineteen thousand dollars a year comes off, what others will be paying. So um with Holiday Inn Express, the casino pays but twelve thousand dollars less a year. Country Inn pays four thousand less a year. Come and go three thousand dollars less to this. So that's the issue is to get everybody to really present this. Obviously, it's going to be three to one for option number two.
You need to talk with them. You don't even know where they're at on it and what their understanding is of what, what they should be doing at this point. Cause they've just gotten through, they've gotten by at this point, not being in it.
That's, that was my opinion as well. We needed to talk to Holiday Inn, no percent.
It's supposed to be in there.
Yeah, they are. By, by.
They can be forced to connect. Or at least you can go on for it uh because it's mandatory, but
I don't want to start a tree against one battle out there really bad either. Now we actually got dollars for what it's going to cost. Um, I think we need to have that come out of the head of that. And I do have that type of information off my agenda that.
Yeah, I think you should sit down with Holiday Inn.
And then once Holiday Inn is done, depending on how that conversation goes, if they're agreeable to us, then we just take off to one off the table and here's the rate. Um, so using these numbers, assuming it's option two, um, Diamond Hill, as far as the water goes, so Diamond Hill is going to pay eighty-seven hundred dollars a year more. Country Inn, eight thousand dollars a year more than the far right on the increase from last year. Um, Holiday Inn, thirty-five hundred dollars a year more and Come and Go, five thousand, eight hundred dollars a year more than what they paid last year. Then if you go to the, to the bottom table there, option two, there's a pretty significant increase in the wastewater. Like it's first of all, because you've been losing money in the wastewater. We have to cover that. And then second of all, because of the anticipated capital expenses, the maintenance work that needs to be done out there. So we're increasing the, the new sewer rate, seventy, just about seventy-five thousand dollars. But it needs to be done.
It should have been done, what, three, five years ago? So hopefully they understand this.
It hadn't even been adjusted for inflation.
No.
For. We've been losing money well over a year.
Not even through COVID.
Three years in wastewater. Not on the water.
Not on the water, but on the wastewater. Yeah.
And if we run these rates for a year and you see you're starting to make.
Right.
But we need to make the adjustment. Nothing, nothing is going to achieve it.
And improvements have been done that they haven't, that they have, I mean, we didn't pay for, but they didn't pay for either.
They've had, there, this is just for operation. There's no building a new water plant, installing a water main. None of those costs are in there. All that's been funded by other most means. Unfortunately, since there's so few users, we still have to have the same operation. So the few users have to pay the cost. Yeah, the more users, the better when you're putting it up.
Kind of like having a little county.
So I will meet with Holiday Inn this week. I don't know if you want to be involved, any of you? I can't if you want to. I'll schedule it out maybe later in the week. And then from there we'll zero and we can report back Monday as far as how did it go? What did they think? Do we need to force it? Hope you're not going to force it and then that's when we get that decision to move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else you got?
That's it. I just.
Any questions?
Have you got for him?
It was a three against one, kinda presenting two options that had me concerned.
Well, yeah, I think it's a wise of us to go to them. I, I completely agree with that.
So. Okay, well, thank you, Jason. Um, next, we have a vacancy on the Conservation Board, and Sam Walk has got a application in. I'll take a motion to approve Sam Walk for the Conservation Board. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Melissa is at a meeting with Heartland Electric, so she's gone today. Um, anything new on EMS or anything?
You know, there's been some more meetings and there may be some stuff coming up. Underest the county as far as, maybe some discussion on, uh, a larger EMS district. If the south and the west can get together or not, so.
Um. Taylor didn't get back with this with another bid, did he?
Not yet. I'm not, I'm not. Air exchange.
Yeah, air exchangeers, though, okay. He only had one bid last week, so department had discussions, anything?
Um, I know that, uh, that's new computers in, uh, such his office and got them moved over to. They're now using the officer six-five application, uh, working on expanding that and continuing rolling out, uh, three six five.
Okay. Uh, supervisor with the report, AJ, what'd you have?
Uh, rage. Rage means I did have care connections on Tuesday, and, um. Just kinda went through some financial stuff, compared on budgets. For next year, um, we had a very good year. As far as getting a lot of, a lot more services out there, which was part of our spend down, I guess, on our. Our dollars we had since the state flipped over, you know, we had to spend down our. Our money, so we've put a lot of new services into, into the region, and it's been going very, very well. Um, it sounds like the, the, uh, meeting they had over here, I know Dan said it was a good, very good thing, uh, with, worth the one I go to, uh. On who to call, basically, there's so many services now that these guys never knew about, and they have access to, and then they. It almost confused them all because they didn't know who to call. So now I think everybody's got that in order on, uh, who to call for what services and. So I, I think our regions go very, very well, so. Okay, that's, and that's all I had. Mark?
Uh, Central Iowa, we have the executives for me for Central Iowa to give them attention. We just finished up. Reviewing the last half of the handbook, um, so we'll actually send that off to legal and make sure that some of the adjustments we have. And a lot of us just for exchanges and things, but get that, and then we'll take it to the full board for approval. Um, and then Friday, I attended the Iowa Drainage District Association Drainage Meeting, um, again, a good meeting, um. Legislative priorities, I don't think it changed a whole lot in the last year, but, uh. Little discussion on the railroad, not wanting to pay, and we can already see that, um, their objections out here, different areas. Biggest, biggest pain we have is railroad and drainage districts, so.
Did they, did they bring up, um, publications at all?
Yes, there, that is one of the five things that they're gonna try to do this year is somehow get our expenses down. On how we notify landowners as far as.
Every single landowner, newspaper, or something.
That was one of the things, that's the one thing that he brought to our attention, that they were gonna go after, was to try to get that. How they're gonna go about doing it, I don't know. He didn't go into that, he just said that that was one of the top priorities on their list. So.
That's all I had.
Yeah, and I, I attended the same drainage district meeting. Uh, Val is no longer a drainage clerk, she's now a drainage administrator.
Whoa.
So.
That's news to me.
Well, there you go, you just heard it.
Wow, how, what?
Well, I don't know if that was a joke or not.
I don't know if it was or not, but that's the way I took it.
It was.
John said it.
Yeah, the lawyer.
The lawyer said it.
Oh.
No.
Okay, well, I'm bringing to your attention then. You might see something come through on that, but.
I don't.
Yeah, John and the lawyer said it.
Was it a legal thing or?
I don't know what was either.
We're joking about.
But I thought I'd relay the message back home.
Yeah.
So. Um. Let's see, oh, they did bring up that, the lawyer brought this up. That Wright County has a resolution right now for the pipeline that covers windmills. Uh, the electric connectivity lines between wind, between the windmills, the transmission lines, everything. And they said, even if you don't have a pipeline in your area, you should get that done and get it signed. And we were working on that a while back here, and then.
Grease kept saying, no, don't do it. And I don't know if I agree with him on that, but.
They're telling us to do it.
Yeah, they said get it done before you have the issues.
Yeah. So, but they said proactive instead of. But it was Wright, it was Wright County that had the resolution that they, the lawyer said is.
Kind of the most up to date.
Most up to date one, that you can copy and go right off from, so.
Like the drainage, Iowa, they, they, they've been working.
Well, that's basically what I picked up.
Yes.
Um. And granted, yeah, there's one lawsuit already with the railroads, right?
Yeah, I think.
They had to sue them for the, they're suing them right now to get their money. So, it's already started.
So then do they end up, that is, will the railroad have to pay the legal cost too, or?
I would assume maybe if the pony would win or whatever, the, the district would win.
They're challenging some things.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly what it was.
Somebody's gonna have to be the first one, so the railroad will have to start paying.
It's already happened.
That would precedent something.
Kind of playing some kind of virtue or something that.
And, uh.
Can they do crossings too then?
No, they. They told me that at a meeting this. Well, we're allowed to cross the railroad. I said, you guys always come in and do something with your rail. And you never go out to your right of way. And I said, I'm expected to take care of my right of way, why don't you guys take care of yours?
Which they are, but.
But they won't.
You can tell that on three ninety.
Yep, we were more than in it, we were out there.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll, they'll take care of their rail stuff, but anything beyond the wooden tie. They say it's our responsibility.
And do they even let you touch it?
Not without their flaggers and their insurance or other crap they go with.
So, that's kinda what we picked up down there. Uh, next week's agenda, I would like to, we need to get the custodian review done. So. I've got that information. Would you like to do it after a meeting? Or during the week?
Doesn't matter.
And he, and he can ask for a close second. You wanna do it later on, like, uh, after the DD two meeting on the.
Say.
Eighteenth.
Yeah, we have drainage.
Yeah, we have drainage next week, so we could do the meeting, and then DD two, and then have this thing after that, maybe at ten thirty.
Yep.
Along with the DD two meeting for completion. So, let's do a custodian review at ten thirty, and then I was, I will forward him what the. The committee put together, so he's got a chance to take a look at it. Um, alrighty. Uh, anything else on the agenda that we need to? Everything are good? In that case, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. We are adjourned.